With that, I want to go on and call us to order. And with it's 7/11 that we'll officially call to order with a Commissioner Hasty, will you open this up with a prayer?
Sure. Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you've given us. Health, strength, peace, and a country that where we have privileges and voices to conduct our business as we are tonight. We pray that you will be with us, that we will make the right decisions for the community. Be with us in all that we do. These things we ask in thy name.
Move in now to roll call on that. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
Evans? Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire is absent. Peterson?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
And Slattery?
Here.
Alright, that's eight.
Thank you. I'm going to, before we approve the minutes from our last meeting, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the agenda, but I'm going to make one amendment to that before we adopt it. Want to move item, under item six, excuse me. Yeah, item nine, sorry. Moving from item nine, the first item under item nine, 217 Shivel Drive, want to move that to the top of the agenda after we adopt our amendment, so we can just kind of, I know a lot of folks are probably here relative to that tonight, and keep you from having to sit through the entire meeting, want to get that addressed first then on that. So we'll move that to the top of the agenda if nobody has any opposition to it. But with that, I've got a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. Can I get a second on that, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Altizer. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we'll just approve our minutes from our last meeting in August. Is there, I'm assuming everybody's gotten a chance to review those, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none.
I'd like to abstain.
Commissioner Silkwood was not here last month, so she'll abstain on that. So Lauren, did you catch that? Thank you. With that, we will move into our agenda as amended. What will, it's 217 Shivel. What we'll do first is we'll ask, I think that we, the number of folks have wanted to speak, and I think what's been kind of talked about is because there's not a public hearing scheduled for tonight, because this is not a rezone on this, this is a site plan approval that's on the agenda, so there's not an automatic public hearing scheduled. So what we've done is, I think there's been one representative from folks in the community that wants to speak, and then has three minutes, and then we'll give the developer, the applicant, three minutes to speak as well on that. So with that, who is the designated spokesperson for the community on that? Step up at the podium, introduce yourself, and give us your name and your address here in town, please.
Thank you. My name is Michael Martin, and I live at 224 Shivel Drive. I'm here to speak briefly on behalf of myself, my family, and my neighborhood about the revised 217 Shivel Drive resubmital. First, thank you very much for everything that you guys have done and continue to do for our city. I've been watching the past meeting videos online, and I can see how much work is involved, and how late some of the meetings can run, so I thank you for this opportunity to speak. The neighborhood was excited to read about, in the Hendersonville standard, that the developers and their lawyer wanted to reach a happy medium with the neighborhood. The neighborhood was a little less excited to find out that the developer had the meeting to reach a happy medium with the neighborhood without anybody from the neighborhood present. The neighbor, the neighborhood had one primary, primary request, and that was to move the architecturally non-conforming two-story building towards the back of the property. The neighborhood was not very excited to learn that the developers were only willing to move the building back from 25 feet off the street to 35 feet off the street. In, in exchange for this happy medium, they would now be proposing a three-story architecturally non-conforming building. The, the happy medium the developers gave themselves was to grow the building taller than they were willing to move it. Reviewing the revised drawings, the project is still deficient for the following reasons. The high-density project still only has one fire access road. A second road is needed for an apparatus to reach the six units in the rear in case the first access road is blocked by vehicles, or if they're unable to maneuver into the drive because of the overflow parking on the street. I, I believe that this has been enforced on similar projects in the past. Number two, the 35% open requirement is still not met in the revised drawings. Number three, the original site naturally sheet flowed stormwater to the north property line. These revised drawings continue to alter the natural flow of water and collect and discharge all of it at now a single point onto Robert and Gloria Poole's property. Tennessee is still a natural-flow state, so the developer could be responsible not only for damage to their property, but for the damage to every property downstream from the 217 Shivel property. Number four, the original two-story project submitted did not meet Section 12.2.3's requirement for the architectural style, design, colors, building materials, roof, and other similar features to be compatible with existing residential buildings within the same subdivision. The project still fails that requirement, but now it's a three-story project, so it fails even more. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and again, thank you for everything you guys do for the city.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a representative for the property owner, the applicant, or property owner?
Donovan Degree, 271 Carrollton Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. We heard all the concerns, and appreciate you sharing this, Mike.
Could you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, could you explain your relationship to the applicant?
Uh, yeah, so just a consultant with the applicant, been with it from the beginning. And so essentially, we identified this piece of property and knew the OTR zoning, and so we tried, our intention from the get-go was to always be 100% straight zone with zero variance. And so based on that, we've kind of met with each department, tried to address all the concerns, and at this point in time, we're agreeing to all staff comments and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Want to recognize our city attorney here for a moment as well, so he can speak to the audience and just kind of speak about kind of the process that's going on here. So Mr. Bradley, would you come up, please?
The mayor had asked me to just make a few comments to the planning commission, of course, he's appointed most of you, and everybody's concerned that we do things the way we should, and everybody's concerned that we have good quality products here in Hendersonville. What I wanted to tell you just a little bit, just for people maybe that don't understand the process, is that when we have a property that's zoned a certain way, then that zoning is, there's a best you're right to that zoning and the things that carries with it. Now, projects such as this 217 shovel, the zoning is in place for multifamily, everybody knows that, and then there's a question about what should or shouldn't be built on it, and that's where we come into our issues of disagreement, is what's proper and what's not proper. But in this particular process, in this project, the, if, in this case, where the zoning is in place, and it's undeniable that the zoning is in place for multifamily, it is incumbent on the developer to meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance with respect to whatever they might build on that property. This property in particular has been in an area called Town Center for a little over 15 years, and it's been multifamily, actually, zoned for multifamily since 1970, with, with similar type zoning throughout with various zoning ordinance that we've passed over the times. But in this case, what's important for the staff is to make sure that if you're going to allow this building to be built, that it meets all the requirements of codes and fire, safety, and various things. In this case, the plan that was presented back in May had met those staff comments, and of course, as you know, that, that plan failed to receive approval from this body. Since that time, there have been a couple of meetings with the, between city officials and the developers to try to see if there could be something worked out that would be more palatable to the planning commission and to the residents and to the city. And what they have come up with now, as I understand it, and anyone, you know, you can ask questions, the developer or Mr. Free, is a project that is less dense than previously, is going from 17 units to 12 units. And it is, it's a, it's a, it's a different, it's, it's a little further back off the road. Also, there have been an agreement made that there not be a sidewalk built in front of, instead, money would be paid to the city in lieu of that. It's also an agreement that the trees in the front of the property on shovel, that they do everything they can to save those trees, and also to add some additional landscaping, so that it's less onerous, or less, you know, less, less objectionable to, to the residents of the neighborhood. And no one has ever suggested that everyone's going to be happy with any plan, and certainly you're in a very tough position, I don't envy you a bit for the vote that you have on something like this. I would just say that, in my opinion, as, as an attorney, is that if, in your opinion, as a planning commission member, this project meets all the requirements that are required for our, by our zoning ordinance, and by our staff, and by our codes, then I would suggest, if I were a planning commission, if it met all of those, I would vote for it. If you don't think it meets all of those, then you vote against it. I'm not telling you how to vote, but I'm just saying that's sort of the obligation you have as a member of the planning commission, to make that evaluation based on the input you've got from the city staff, and, you know, whatever, whatever else you might review in making your decision. So that's, that's basically pretty much the, the things I wanted to just point out to you, so that, you know, just because, just want everybody to know that if you vote for this project, that doesn't mean you love multifamily or anything else, you're just trying to say that this does meet the requirements of the Hendersonville zoning ordinance. Anybody have any questions? That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What I'm going to do now, so we can open this up to the discussion among the commissioners here, is I'm going to make a motion to approve, that is just simply, we do not make motions to deny, so this just gets it on the floor, so I do need a second on that, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion, let me qualify that, motion to approve with all staff comments. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion among the, questions commissioners want to ask? Commissioner Hasty?
This ball's been kicked around, I'll make the call for questions.
We have a call for question, I don't believe that needs a second, do that correct? Okay. Okay, okay. Can we get a second on the call for the question?
I'll call, I'll give a second.
Okay, we have a sec. Any opposition to proceeding to vote? Hearing none, we will proceed to roll call vote then. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Oh, she's absent. Peterson? Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
Alright, that is seven and one, the project passes.
That was the project. Yes, yes. Next on the agenda tonight, we have our consent agenda. And it's going to start with Glenbrook South, the final plat. Timothy, I think you took the lead on, or, excuse me, we've got a consent agenda on that, we've got two items on there. Glenbrook South and Starks Estate on that. Any, anybody have anything that they want to pull off the consent agenda or anything like that, any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Got a motion and a second. Lauren, could you call the roll to approve the consent agenda, please?
Alright, Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you. Item five on our agenda would be final plats. We have Center Point Park, and Timothy, it looks like you are the lead on this, would you tell us a little bit, or, no, there you are, a sec, can you give us a little bit of what's going on here, please?
This, this subdivision is located on South Center Point Road. Century Steel is located on the lower property there, where you see the one existing business there. They potentially want to expand their, their business to the property to the north. So as part of the subdivision, they have, they've agreed to what is basically a right-of-way swap. You can see on that graphic there on the screen, the existing right-of-way that's highlighted in red, that was the old alignment for the future Rockland Road extension coming from, where it currently terminates at West Main Street, and was, is to connect over to South Center Point Road. The, since that time, the route for the Rockland Road extension has shifted to the north, the, the green area there on the picture. That's, that gives kind of the overall, or, or part of the overall picture of the Rockland Road extension. So what, what's being proposed here is that the city would agree to abandon the, the right-of-way and the public use easement shown in red, and in return, Century Steel would provide alternate right-of-way shown in the green. I would point out that that existing right-of-way, you can see, most of it runs across or, or parallel with an existing stream, which would make construction of the future road very difficult and expensive. So rerouting to the north is to be desired. So the, in, in return, Century Steel would, I'm sorry, the, the, Century Steel would provide that in the future, that the easement to the north in the green could be converted by the city to right-of-way at their discretion and without compensation. So right now, it'll be an easement that says future road, right-of-way, and then whenever the city gets ready, or somebody else to build that road, and that could be converted to right-of-way. In return, the city would agree to abandon the existing right-of-way and public use easement shown in the red.
Thank you, Timothy. Do we have a representative for the applicant here by chance?
Alright, yeah, need to point out one more thing, that is, the, the city, by doing this, the city would be agreeing that Century Steel would not have to build any part of that future road either now or upon expansion of their business. They would not be responsible for construction of that road.
Thank you. Junior, introduce yourself and tell us your relationship to the applicant, please.
Yes, my name is Keith Hopper, owner of Century Steel, owner of the property and potential owner of the new property.
Thank you. Any, we'd like you to stay up here for questions, that sort of thing, but do you have any comments that you'd like to add in addition? Well, with that, then, we'll open this up to questions, comments from Commissioner, and Commissioner Altizer, I see your mic's lit up. Same for Mr. Hasty, your, your light up as well. Anybody want to ask any questions or any comments?
Well, I'll ask, they, they've basically met all staff comments and requirements, correct? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question for you, so you intend to expand your, your business onto this new property once all this is complete, is that correct?
Yes, and it, it'll primarily be a storage area that we use, just like we use part of our yard now, so.
Okay, well, thank you for expanding in Hendersonville and growing your business, we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Hasty?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Lauren, could you move us into a roll call vote, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have site plans. First one up is for Hendersonville Rugby Fields Bathroom and Concession Building Plan, Building Site Plan. Timothy, this one is you as well.
On that last item, you will be seeing this next month as a right-of-way abandoned. Separate process, that a right-of-way abandoned, that's you, and then...
And two readings at Boma.
Thank you for that clarification, Timothy.
So on the, the rugby fields, the parks, the, Parks Bathroom and Concession, I'm sorry, that's on. Testing, testing?
Is that?
He wasn't on.
Yeah, okay, we're, I'm on now. This is a request by the Parks Department for approval of kind of a new type of construction for a bathroom and concession facility, which is to be located at the rugby fields off of Avant Lane. So this is a prefabricated unit, it's all concrete, the, the walls are concrete, the, the roof is concrete, and the concrete is, is molded and formed to simulate different materials. This one on the, on the screen is kind of a board and batten look on the walls, and then a shingle look on the, on the concrete roof. The proposal is, would be the same as that, except it's a, a bit larger facility and standing seam look to the roof. And in addition, they are requesting that the planning commission indicate kind of a general approval of this type of construction for future concessions slash bathrooms that they may wish to locate in the future. Of course, for a specific bathroom or concession stand, they'd have to come before you for the site plan, but they would just like a general indication of the approval of this type of construction. The city's building, building design standards don't really speak to this, it doesn't say this type, you know, concrete construction is preferred or prohibited, but there, there are requesting approval of this.
Commissioner Slattery? Your mic's lit up, at least on my screen it is. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, just a quick note for everyone, my husband is the president of the rugby club, and I will be recusing myself from voting on this and participating in the discussion, so Lauren, if you wouldn't mind making note of that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Silkwood. It almost is kind of unusual to ask this, considering owners of the city of Hendersonville, but do we have a representative from the developer here on that? Okay, okay. Eddie, do you have anything in addition that you want to add?
No, I'm, I'm, this is kind of, this is new to our city, but it's not new to parks, you see these in a lot of state parks, at golf courses. See, Brentwood is using these with their new all-inclusive playground, so this is not a new thing to the parks and recreation field, it is new to our city, and I do kind of look in the future as we develop parks and restrooms and concession stands, I think this might be a standard going forward, probably.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Gilli, I like the looks of these, and I think what's important is it's a cost-saving measure to get these prefab facilities, but looking at that example, it sure looks small.
The example on the screen is not any, that's not what we are getting at rugby. Stephen can probably kind of speak to the design, we'll have more restrooms, a concession area, and storage space at rugby. That's just to show you all an example of kind of the exterior, what one of these buildings looks like.
Okay, and less maintenance than the ones we have at Saunders Ferry Park?
Yes, 100%.
Thank you, Director.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Altizer?
I have a question more for, I guess, Timothy, if we allow it for the parks and the city to use, are we allowing that for a broader use in the community?
No, not necessarily, you would have to take that action to approve it anywhere else.
Commissioner Slattery?
I hadn't even touched it yet when you said my name.
I'm sorry, what's going by?
That's good.
Somebody's in Beth's seat, oh, and that's, that's what's throwing me off.
Lauren, assign me a seat. Just, I got a question for you, Timothy, again, with the, the request to use concrete, is it going to be officially worded, or is the request where the concrete is used to mimic various materials? I wouldn't want to pass this, and then in two years, we have a cinder block building somewhere.
The, no, the, the application is for a, a concrete treatment, the same as what you see here, no, the, the size is not the same.
No, no, no.
But, yes, what, what we're proposing, and Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, the building that will be here will have this specific look to it.
That would, excuse me, that would be correct. The, the top half of the building would be the board and bat style, the bottom half would be the horizontal lap. The, the roof would mimic a metal standing seam style roof, that would be kind of the difference between this structure and what we're proposing for the city. We're selecting the, the standing seam style roof because from, from discussions with other parks, it seems that it functions better, for, for whatever reason, in preventing leaks in, during rain events.
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify a little bit further, you said, Timothy, that this will be the kind of request that we're, we're probably going to see going forward, and, and Director, you said as well, this would be the, the kind. I just want to be sure that while concrete is not mentioned in the city's building standards as preferred or prohibited, if we're approving this, we are approving it specifically concrete that is designed to mimic other building materials?
Yes, I would point out that the city's building design standards do, they do list CMU block as not a preferred material. So if, if, if parks wanted to do a CMU block building, that would require a specific waiver from the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention that, looking at the colors, those are actually, there's different colors on the, the walls and the ceiling, it kind of looks from the photo, it's just the way it looks, it looks like it's all one mono kind of color, but there will, there will be a variation, so it'll either be lighter or darker on the ceiling versus, versus the walls, so that will make it look quite a bit different. But I think it's, it's going to be a darker, a darker look for, for either the roof or the, or the walls, so I just wanted to mention that.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none and seeing none, I am going to entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments.
I'll make the motion to approve with all staff comments.
Second.
We've got two seconds, we have a motion in two seconds. Lauren, will you call the roll on this, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Oh, abstaining, sorry. Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
Alright, that's all seven.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is, sounds very similar, but just a little bit different, Hendersonville Soccer Field at Drake's Creek Park, this is parking additions, and this also goes for the rugby field as well, the site plan. Timothy, will you, let's lead us off here, please?
Alright, yeah, this is a, kind of a two-part project, from Parks to convert one of the existing soccer fields at Drake's Creek Park from grass to artificial turf, and then at the rugby complex to provide field lights for the, one of the rugby fields, and then to provide for, or reconfigure ADA parking spaces for both facilities. Normally, this level of project would not trigger site plan review, or, or have to come before full planning commission, but it's being at least partially funded by a grant, and the terms of that grant require the planning commission, a, will require a presentation and, and then approval by the planning commission.
Thank you, Timothy.
I believe somebody's here from Parks or Alicia to present the project.
Okay, thank you.
While she comes up, Mr. Chairman, if you could recognize me quickly?
Absolutely, yes.
I just wanted to say again, my husband is president of the rugby club, and I will be abstaining from both the vote and... be abstaining from both the vote and discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Silkwood. Would you introduce yourself in?
Sure. I am Alicia Ely. I work for Kimley Horn. We're assisting the city both on the grant application and then ultimately the design for this project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. Is this an existing soccer field or is this brand new?
It is existing. It's natural grass today and the grant would provide it to be transitioned to artificial turf.
Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hasty?
It's going to be artificial turf. That's a flood zone, right?
Not this field location, it is not.
It's not in the flood plain?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I'm just going to ask and take a little point of personal privilege, just playing the benefit to the city and to the community at large of doing this project, if you don't mind, please.
Sure, so this grant in particular is the largest park-specific grant funding source that there is and it's very competitive. They fund up to a million dollar of value of projects and so the city was very fortunate in receiving this grant money. This location specifically with the LED lights are going to be more efficient and less glare onto the surrounding areas. And then the artificial turf, you get more playability, so you're going to have less rain outs and you're going to have less maintenance costs long-term and associated with the grant, we're required to do ADA upgrades and so the parking out front currently is not ADA accessible, so we'll have a couple of dedicated ADA stalls as well as a sidewalk and a poured concrete wheelchair seating area pad so that if someone's coming to watch the game, they have a truly ADA compliant path to watch the game on this field. On rugby, it's going to be new lights, so again, being able to play at dark or, you know, in the fall when it gets light very early, practicing games will be, you know, you'll have more playability as well. Again, because we're asking for that improvement, we've got to do the ADA upgrade, so right now it's gravel parking, so we'll have a concrete area where we'll have ADA accessible parking and then similarly a small sidewalk and wheelchair viewing area for someone in a wheelchair to view a rugby game on that field.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Lauren, can you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans. Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slattery.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda, item seven, this is Director Free's is going to give us a rundown of staff level projects that have been approved.
Yes, on staff level projects that have been approved, there's a ER canopy at the hospital that was approved and a parking lot renovation that we did at the staff level. Mr. Carwash is doing an exterior paint change that we approved and there's a new entry feature at Savannah with a ground sign.
Thank you. Now, item eight is staff level projects that are pending. Would you like to do this one as well?
I'll just hit highlights.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just hit the highlights there. Projects that we're reviewing in-house right now, Community Church Outdoor Ministry Center, significant investment that the church is considering making there in their outdoor area. Also Hazel Path Mansion and the installation of a large fountain on that site. Indian Lake Subdivision, Section 17, Lot 30, that's a plat, that's a division of property that's just south of the new strip center, that's right there at Indian Lake, sort of south of McAllister's, within that area. And then also Taco Bell on West Main Street, they're going to be doing a renovation of that building, a different paint scheme and a few significant improvements to that. Also Walmart, doing a large renovation to curbside pickup. It's kind of back there where the landscaping and things were. They're going to have a major pickup facility there for people to, I guess, do orders and then come by and pick that up in their own vehicles. And so that's just kind of the highlights of the major things, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. Item nine on our agenda, we adjusted obviously a little bit with moving 217 shovel up earlier and dealing with that and just, I know that that was brought a lot of consternation to that, so just want to thank everybody kind of involved with that. Unfortunately, you got something litigious like that, we have to deal with it and I would think we handled it as well as we possibly could. But we have stadium townhomes, this is site plan amendment reconsideration that we were originally denied last month. With that grant, I know you have this and normally, Mr. Hale, I'd ask you up here, I noticed you were limping earlier, so if you want to just sit nearby on that, we can have that on that. So with that grant, will you kick us off, please?
I will take your.
Okay, okay.
What this is, this was the issue with stadium townhomes where with the existing site plan, I'm sorry.
Okay, you hear me now? This is the issue at Stadium Drive with stadium townhomes. Where on the existing site plan, there was a note that reflected that the project was homeownership occupied and then the applicant, Mr. Hale, was requesting that that be taken off of there because I think they're considering, it could be owner occupied, but it also could be renter occupied as well. And so at that request, that was denied on the August, I believe on August the 2nd at the planning commission meeting and then this is just up for reconsideration of that issue due to, that it has to do with the occupancy status of the building.
Thank you.
I can answer any questions anybody might have on that.
Mr. Hale, would you like to speak first?
Good evening, Marty Cook, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Hale. I think Mr. Free stated that correctly. It really was just, I think, a misunderstanding as to that original note and there's really no difference in reality in owner occupied and fee simple ownership. The point is that the units will be individual units that are owned individually, which at the time, they were discussing trash pickup and whether it would be an apartment-style dumpster or individual trash pickup. That was the reason for that note. But they will be individually owned, may or not be owner occupied and that's the reason Mr. Hale requested to clarify that note, just like anyone else in this room. If you wished under the guidelines to long-term lease your property, you could and so that's why he wanted to avoid confusion and note that they would be individually owned as units, but not, no guarantee necessarily that they would be owner occupied. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I've got questions myself, just for clarity's sake. These are going to be individually owned then on that. Is there going to be a cap on the number of units an individual could own or?
No.
Okay, so theoretically, one individual could own every unit then on that?
I suppose theoretically, yes.
Okay. Is that the intention or is there something?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reconsideration.
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments.
We've got a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll on that, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans. Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Peterson. Silkwood. Slattery.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
Okay, that's seven and one. The project passes.
Next item on our agenda is just planning director comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items here to discuss tonight. One of the first things I want to lead off with is we have Jay Ritterback that's in the audience right here on the left on the front. He's our newest member to the planning staff. Jay is the economic development and community planner for the city. This is a fairly new position that's going to be taking responsibility of looking over our economic development, assist with different planning projects and also take on some different grant writing responsibilities and assistance with grant writing as well. So those are some of the things that the job will undertake with Jay's new position. Jay's extremely well qualified. We're very pleased and blessed to have him here. He's a great addition to the staff. One of the things that we're looking to do is with economic development is really having it very data-driven, so first we need to understand what all the numbers are of things about businesses and how many we have and where we're maybe short of different things and as we're looking and evaluate businesses that we're maybe to attract here or that are requesting maybe assistance in some manner from the city, is being able to look at financially what that impact would be. Is it financially neutral to the city, financially negative, or hopefully is it financially positive? And so those are some of the things that Jay will be doing and we really appreciate him being with us and you'll be seeing him as we move forward in the future. It's going to be a little bit different because typically the planning staff are going to be up here and be generally neutral on different things. There could be times in the future where Jay may actually be advocating or assisting on a project that might have economic development impact. So it's going to be a little bit different from that standpoint, but that's the role that he's going to look at. One other thing I think it's important to mention, Jay's going to be critically looking at our process, our permitting process and kind of when an applicant or when somebody's getting a building permit or getting a perm, working through something through planning, is look at that whole process and really be critical and evaluate, are we making sure that it's as streamlined as possible? We certainly, you know, as we move forward as a community, we're always going to have high standards. We're going to have substantially higher standards than our neighboring communities, but in that process is even though people are coming here knowing we have higher standards, we also want them to be assured we have looked at and we've got our processes streamlined. So once they get into our system of application, they will know that we have thoroughly looked at that and tried to make that as understandable as possible and as quick as possible to get to the point. So excited about that position. Thank you very much, Jay. Sorry, I had a couple of other things here. We do have, there's a requirement for four hours of training for Board of Zoning Appeal members as well as planning commissioners, except for Lee, there's not a requirement for the representative from BOMA, but everybody else has a four-hour requirement for training. We have some training coming up and Lauren will be getting this to you, probably something tomorrow. Our first training, I broke it up instead of just doing it all four hours in one shot, breaking it up into two-hour sections. September the 14th, from 10 to 12, we'll have a virtual training with Sam Edwards and some of you are kind of familiar with Sam and he's done some of those things in the past. On September the 20th, from 10 to 12, we're going to actually have in-person training and we're going to have Attorney Tom White that's going to be here and just going through some different things with us. So I think that's going to be really rich beneficial training, so I'm exciting to hear what those folks have to say. Also, you know, we've talked about Westlake and a lot of people have asked about the West Main Old Town redevelopment and future land use plan. We're actually at a point where we're just about complete with the draft of that and the timeline that we're looking at right now, and this is, so we've got our dates pretty set, sometime after September the 14th, we'll forward to you the link for the draft of the plan, as well as this will go to the whole community as well. So everybody's going to get a chance to look at this. We're going to give everybody plenty of time, it's going to be a little over 30 days that everybody will have a chance to look at that, comment, get the information back to us. And then on October the 18th, we'll have a public meeting at Jean Brown Elementary School and our consultants will go over the proposed plan, all the data and information and it'll be opportunity for the public to ask questions and for us to get some feedback. From that feedback, then the next month, November the 15th, we're looking to have a planning commission work session on the evening of November the 15th, just on this one subject and they'll have a revised plan that'll come out of that public meeting for the planning commission to review. Also, we're looking at, we'll definitely invite the BOMA and invite them to that meeting and maybe even possibly make that a joint work session, possibly. And then on December the 6th, I'm anticipating potentially that this could come back to planning commission for final approval of the Westlake. If things, you know, through that process get stretched out a little bit more, it could go into January, but with this timeline, it's very possible by the end of this year that the planning commission could adopt that future land use plan for that very important part of our community. And then the next step from that is once we get that done, then the first of next year, we'll be reevaluating all of the zoning in this whole area, in that whole area of Westlake and more than likely, we're going to come up with two or three new zoning classifications that specifically further whatever the eventual plan that we come up with. And so, and hopefully make those changes before August of next year and make those changes to that zoning. So appreciate the support of the planning commission and you guys will really be getting involved in this process. Also, another process that we've just started with a consultant and you all will be involved in this as well in the coming months, is Stop 30 Future Land Use and Transportation Plan, all the way from New Shackle Island Road to Saundersville Road. We're going to be looking at that whole area to determine, you know, what are the future uses and the future plan of how we'd like to see that area develop and the planning commission will be very involved in that. This will also involve a transportation plan as a part of this. So this one, unlike Westlake, this will actually go to BOMA for approval of the actual transportation plan, but the future land use plan, that will be approved here at the planning commission. Also, we continue to have a high volume of activity in the planning department. Our use and occupancies are through the roof. We still are maintaining about 35% higher activity than we had last year this time and the previous year as well. So a lot of activity going on. Our subdivision regulations, the staff is going to reconvene on all the work that we've done for proposed changes to the subdivision regulations and we anticipate before the end of the year, we'll have a work session on that and maybe by the end of the year or the first of next year, we'll adopt, the planning commission will adopt those new subdivision regulations. And the subdivision regulations, different than the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance, that's something where the planning commission makes a recommendation to BOMA and BOMA takes final action. On the subdivision regulations, it's different. That's just something that's totally at the planning commission level, that the planning commission will make that decision on that. Also, also, you know, one of the things, we'll be evaluating staff level, so if staff level approvals, so there's things in the zoning ordinance where, you know, we approve a lot of things and we talk about those, I talked about some of those this evening, but we'll be really looking at things that we can approve at the staff level and make sure as long as we feel comfortable at the staff level, going ahead and approving those things that are clearly within that authority. But sometimes there will be times when it's just something we're not comfortable with and that may go to the planning commission. One of the things that I wanted to mention is, you know, some of the things that we talked about tonight with, and we've dealt with on Shivel Drive and some of these other different things, stadium townhomes and things like that, some changes were made in the zoning ordinance that BOMA made here just a couple of months ago that impact those areas that have been really focused on by probably a lot of the folks that were here earlier that live in that neighborhood around Imperial, Shivel Drive. All of that area for the most part is owned Old Town Residential and I think just as the city attorney said, a lot of that whole area has been sold multifamily, 17 units an acre back in 1970, so has a history of being zoned at a high density, although it really hadn't been developed at a high density until recently. But those changes that were made in the zoning ordinance, those changes actually significantly reduced the number of units allowed per acre in OTR and that changed from 15 units an acre all the way down to five. So potential projects under the now revised zoning ordinance will be significantly different than some of these items that we've dealt with here in recent months. And I just wanted, I think everybody was mostly aware of that, but I just wanted to share that. And that's everything that I had, Mr. Chairman. I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, um, I'm just going to thank you for your report and welcome new folks to the city and to the planning department and with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
We, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify, say ah.
Hi.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.